We'll begin. Attendance has been taken. We have regrets from Councilor Howes and Councilor Bell. Councilor Pierce is running late. He should be here any minute. Attendance then has been taken. I need the approval of the agenda, please. Councilor Coleman, seconded by Councilor Gatward. All those in favor? I need a motion to convene as a committee of the whole. Councilor Wheat and Councilor Ferrier. All those in favor? We now sit as a committee of the whole. We have presentations. At the request of the mayor, we have a presentation from Joanne Lewis from the Brant Community Foundation. It's an addendum to your agenda. I'd like to call Joanne Lewis and Bill Underwood to the podium, representing the Brant Community Foundation.
Your worship and members of council. I'm doing the Ed McMahon. Here's Johnny. Thank you for the invitation. I've been on the board of the Brantford Community Foundation about three and a half years and recently installed a chair. I have big shoes to fill because the previous chair was a fellow named David Bailey. We are, we understand the reason for our presentation is for information purposes. We are a charity organization, foundation, and we're not selling anything, but hopefully members of council will have a little better idea as to what we do and to assist them in their further deliberations. Joanne Lewis has only been the executive director of the foundation since 2001. She is the total guru in this and I leave the microphone, which I didn't use, to Joanne.
Okay. So can everybody hear me now? I think so because I can hear myself very loud. Thank you so much for inviting us here to talk about the Brant Community Foundation. And we're going to be focusing on the foundation and how it's governed and the foundation's grant programs and our role in administering the city of Brantford's grant program. Now, this is going to be a short program from us and if you do have any questions or if I go over anything too quickly, like, please feel free to just jot the questions down and we'll answer them later. So to give you a bit of history, the first community foundation in Canada was started in Winnipeg in 1921. So today there are more than 191 community foundations across Canada, including here in Brant. So our community foundation has more than 90 years of experience behind us and a national network that connects us coast to coast with other communities. So everyone in this room knows how special our community is. Brant has an interesting history, a natural beauty of trails and waterways, all of which makes us a perfect spot to live, work, play, and raise a family. And there's always something to do with festivals and events, studio art tours, one-of-a-kind shops, various sports tournaments, music and theater. There's really something for everyone. And that is why we established a community foundation here in our area in 1997. Local leaders believed our community is very special and deserves to have the needs and priorities recognized and supported today and for generations to come. Today, we're still governed by community leaders. They understand our community and appreciate our community. And I think you'll recognize some of these names. There's Bill Underwood, Janice Montour, Larry Davis, Paula Tomlinson, Tanya Stevens, Darren Cleary, Jim Steele, Lucy Marco, Chuck Beach, and France Tebow. So very briefly, what a community foundation is. Our foundation builds permanent funds through donations from many donors. The donations are kept forever and invested. Grants are given out from the investment earnings to local charities in Brantford, Brant County, Six Nations of the Grand River, and Mississaugas of the New Credit. Now, these legacy funds, these donations, are permanent and the named funds are a legacy to the donors. Now, there's a lot of information about funds, like different amounts, what are the different types of funds and all of that. And those are details that, you know, are for donors that are interested in starting a fund. So this is something I would be really pleased to talk to you about at another time or each of you individually, but tonight we're going to focus on the foundation's grant programs. The importance of building our legacy funds is that the earnings are used for our grant program. And that's the main purpose of the Brant Community Foundation, to give out grants to local, to our local community. So our grants are given out to local charities and we must give to qualified donors as designated by Revenue Canada. So all of the organizations that we give to are registered charities. For example, we've, the Children's Safety Village, the Brantford Symphony Orchestra, the Grand River Conservation Foundation for Apples Mills, the Paris Presbyterian Church for the Raw Carrot Soup Program. They all received grants in 2018. Now, we have a package for you that has our annual report, our vital signs report, and a copy of the City of Brantford grant application. And if you want more of any of those things, we'll be happy to provide them for you. But all our grants are listed in our annual report. But you can see, they're not tied to any one organization or a charitable sector, but all our grants do stay local. And because they stay local, our board and our grants committee understands the needs in all sectors. So our grants support organizations that make our community tick, like the Lansdowne Children's Center, the Brant Tree Coalition, and the Sanderson Center. So not just one sector or one population or one interest, but an entire community. So the foundation started administering the city of Brantford's grant program in 2001. The city's grant program has grown quite a bit since then, but I'm just going to talk about two categories that they have. One is their operating grants and the other is their capital and seed grants. So in your package that we left here for you, there's a copy of the grant application form and you'll see on pages 13 to 19 that the guidelines that the city has set out are explained very well. The foundation also has a contract with the city, which has more details in it because it's really important for us, who is administering these grants, to make sure that we understand the purpose of the city grants and are able to award the grants as the city would wish them to be awarded. Like foundation grants, the city's grants support projects from all sectors. The operating grants, the city set out a point system so that applications can be reviewed on their own merit and not compared to other grants. So each application is reviewed on their community benefit, their budgetary needs, financial reporting and controls, and accountability. Then each application is awarded a point value and these point values determine what grants that each application will receive. Now, for the capital and seed funding, there's also a point system, but that is just to determine the fit of the grant and the strength of the organization. It doesn't, they're not calculated on a point system. But in the grant criteria that the city has set out, the grants can also go to charities, not-for-profit organizations, or groups that are collaborating on projects. They still have to have a structure, like a board or a steering committee, and accountability. The city also allows grants to individuals and teams representing the city as a direct result of success at a municipal, provincial, or national level. Because city grants do not necessarily go to qualified donors, a list of the grant is sent to the city and the checks are processed and issued through them. So granting is important to us and we wanted to make sure that we were doing it right. So the board decided to undertake a vital signs report in 2018. Since we've been giving out grants since 2001 and grants support a wide range of projects and activities, we wanted to make sure that our grants were addressing the most pressing needs in our community and would have the greatest impact. The vital signs is a community checkup, like a snapshot of our community at this point in time, and it looks at key areas that have an impact in the quality of life. So you've heard that granting is a serious business for us. All charities struggle to find operating expenses for their programs or to add new programs to fill gaps in, that are not available in our community. And we're pleased that our grants make a difference in our community. And we also want to acknowledge that grants from the city of Brantford and your municipal grant program are key to the success of our community. So thank you for taking grants seriously, too. So now, that's the end of what I have planned to say, but if you have any questions or would you like more information about the foundation, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Excuse me. Any questions for Joanne? Councilor Gatward?
Thank you, Mayor Bailey. Through you to Joanne. If we're handing grants out tonight, if someone doesn't get a grant and they came to you for a grant, are they too late for 2019 or what is your cutoff date?
Our cutoff date for the foundation grants are October. So, no, they'd be very, very early right now. The City of Brantford grants, they have a deadline quarterly, the end of March, June, September, and December. And if the people that were coming to you for grants were in the city of Brantford or 75% of the benefit of the grant was for Brantford citizens, they could certainly come and they should call us just to see if they do fit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Chambers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Joanne. I'm just wondering how community is defined. For example, a large swath of my ward, they don't go to Brantford, they go to Woodstock. They don't go to Paris, they go to Norwich. And Brantford, Paris are part of the community, but for a large swath of Ward Four, Woodstock and Norwich is their community. So how do you define community when it comes to community foundations? Are they out of luck? Do they have to go to the other foundations or how does that work?
Well, we really have defined our area as Brantford, Brant County, Six Nations of the Grand River, and Mississaugas of the New Credit. So if they were looking for programs that are in their community, even though they're closer to another community, they could probably apply for grants to us. I would certainly suggest that they would call us to make sure that it does fit. And if it was something that they were working with someone else in another community that was serviced by another community foundation, we would be able to direct them to that, too.
And if I, just to conclude, just for example, you had mentioned, and why I asked the question, you had mentioned the Apples Mill Foundation or whatever that is. Well, in my area, it's Bacchus Mill, which is kind of foreign to a lot of people, but it's, I can assure you that, that the people in the southwest, they are associated with the Long Point Conservation Authority rather than the Grand River Conservation Authority and they have a Long Point Foundation as well, but it often gets missed when it comes to things like this. And I just point that out.
Thanks.
Councilor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question maybe to the clerk. Can we get a copy of that presentation?
Well, sir.
Because I don't have it.
You can have that. Like, just a copy of the text.
Joanne, did you bring packages for us all?
I did bring packages. They include our annual report, a copy of the vital signs report that we did last year, and you will find a lovely picture of our former chair of the foundation in both of these. And then we have a copy of a grant application and there is copies for all of you.
So maybe you could hand those out now and I'll explain to them why I've asked you to be here tonight. The reason I've asked her to be here tonight is because as chair of the Brant Community Foundation, and I was also chair of the grants.
Committee.
Committee.
Your grant committee.
Committee. For many years. And it's, it's just what the city of Brantford put into place to keep the grants sort of arm-length from the councilors. Chris at the time, Chris Frill, was having a hard time at council because things were getting sort of all screwy and people were getting very emotional and very sort of tied to their own areas and their own grants. And it just became unfriendly and they decided to bring in the Brant Community Foundation because it is a very qualified group of people in the Brant Community Foundation and it's done with points and it's done very sort of, it doesn't really matter, none of, none of the people at the, at the Brant Foundation have anything really to gain by any of these grants. So it was done with points and very, very good discussion. And that way, when the decisions were made by the Brant Community Foundation, as Joanne said, we would just take the checks to the city of Brantford and Chris would give them out or Mike would give them out or whoever was mayor at the time. But all the decisions were made by a group of people that, that made them fairly and without any emotion. Now, as far as what community is, I think the Brant Community Foundation, if they, if we as a council decided to put our grants through them, would determine what that community was. I think it needs to be the community, obviously, that's serviced by the people that elect us. For, for, you know, for you to be in your ward and then all of a sudden everybody on your side road doesn't qualify for a grant, doesn't make any sense. So we would have to, you know, make it different than the, it would be the county of Brant plus whatever. So we would, we would tell the community foundation what our community, what that word meant in the process before they began. And also the larger grants that are not sort of for the Lions Club or for the Optimist Club or something like that, the bigger grants that are more substantial and take a bigger chunk out of our budget would be something that we could, we could tell the foundation we would handle on our own. So bigger ones to say, I don't know, the Health Hub or things like that that we're committed to without their decisions. We're just trying to keep all the bickering and the goodwill flowing around the horseshoe here. And that, that's what you get when you sort of give the grants to the foundation. Councilor Ferrier?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering about a couple of things. What's the maximum grant award for the foundation? Is it five or 10,000, 15,000?
For the city of Brantford grants, there's a five, there's several categories. There's a $5,000 and that's an operating. There's a up to $10,000 and that's the capital or seed funding. They've also got, got emergency funding, which is up to 20,000. I didn't speak of any of those tonight, but there's also a capacity building grant, which is a $50,000 grant over a three-year period.
I asked, I've been involved with a lot of organizations that received, and when I started with the community gardens, we received a community foundation grant. It was very helpful. I also want to know if, if we were to, because I do agree with Mayor Bailey on this idea of having a system that everybody understands when they're applying. I like that in principle. However, would, would we be able to guarantee some sort of parity for funds per capita when it comes to population? Or would they be entered into a general pool with Six Nations, New Credit, and Brantford?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. I should explain, the Brant Community Foundation has that larger area. The city of Brantford grants are focused on the city. So that is, that is really to be determined by you. And as the city grants, and I'm comparing a little bit here, but as the city grants have told us what they want and how, like the things that they want to support, you would have to do that, too. Because we need clear guidance. These grants would not be community foundation grants. They would not be about us. They would be about the county of Brant and what you wish and how you want to see your grant.
So we'd be able to have the arms-length piece so that, that people aren't lobbying us constantly for their projects necessarily, but we would have to develop the system and sort of, essentially it would be subcontracting the decision-making piece out to another organization.
Yes.
And would we be able to have local folks on, on that decision-making body?
Our grant committee is made of people from across our whole area and we, something, I guess this is a hard question to answer. We have on our grants committee a staff person from the city, from the clerk's department and non-voting and really just there to keep us on track, to make sure, because sometimes we'll have a question, what do the guidelines say that the city has set out? Because it's easy after you're doing something for a while to sometimes forget those tiny little details, right, that, that are really important. Or because we have a different grant stream, our own grants, sometimes we can get them confused if we didn't have someone there saying, no, on page 23, it says these grants and this, this is, this is allowed or this isn't allowed.
Thank you. Councilor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great idea, but I think, and I do not like tonight because it's a dreaded night when it comes to doing budget. But I think we need to look at this for the 2020 budget and have staff with a report later on or whatever, how the criteria can be set up. It is, it's too late to get in, involved with it for 2019 budget because I, you know, we need to, the criteria needs to be set and, and I, but I do think it's got great potential and I think it would take the onus off some of the councilors, how they feel of whatever, favoritism or whatever. And it does get to be a, so I think, I would make a motion that we look at that for the 2020 budget. Mr. Mayor, seeking a second.
Councilor Miller, second. Any other discussion? I think before we, oh, Councilor Gatward?
I just have one more question about the process. So would we give you, say, okay, we have a grant pot of $100,000 or 150,000 and we would give that to the foundation to distribute amongst the various grant applications? Some may not get a grant if they don't meet the criteria, some may, some may get all their money, some may not get any behalf of the money they've asked for. Is that how it generally goes?
Yes. That's a short answer. But yeah, there, there is a process that really does need to be in place because you have to decide how much money, you have to decide what the criteria, the grants would be determined using those, that criteria. If, there are some grant programs, not some that we have, but, I mean, there are other grant programs that whatever you ask for, you get or you get nothing. These are decisions that you would have to make as a council to give guidance to someone else doing that because, you know, did you want them done as they're being done now? Like the same, is community benefit important? Is that they have accountability important? Is there financial need? How much weight is put on financial need? Those are things that do have to be worked out. And I'm sure you're looking at those kinds of things, too, when you're determining the grants that you're giving out now. And another organization would certainly have to have those guidelines so that you know that it's being done the way you want it to be done.
Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you and apologies for being late and apologies if I did miss this. So you talked about, you know, they fill out their application and it's done on a score and, and that type of thing. Is there any stipulation in there as to, okay, so I've got five people, they all get the exact same score, four of them have had a grant the previous year, so that is in, that is a factor as well if they have received something in previous years? Or is that not even a, not even considered? It's just that particular request with no history?
That, that is not in the city of Brantford contract. It doesn't say anything about that. They do say that they, the grants are there, hopefully, for people to become sustainable, not needing the funny, funding as much every year. So that would probably be, one of the point areas would be the financial need. So if they've been asking year after year, you don't want them to be dependent solely on your grant program, but perhaps they need some funding and if they still have a good community benefit, that, again, these are things that you have to determine. Is that important to you? So sometimes there's a tradition, we've always supported that and we want to continue. Or you might say, we've always supported that and now we want to say, you know, fly little birdie.
No, and I appreciate the way you put that because that's exactly where I was going on that. So it's possible, like you say, if we would, if we would discuss that we could potentially put that as a factor.
Yes.
Like on a, on a, you know, on your scale. So, you know, it's a one if you've got one before, a two if you haven't, that type of thing.
That kind of thing.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Councilor Chambers?
Thank you. The way I understand the resolution to be is that staff is going to prepare a community grant program draft for the perusal of council to be administered by the Brant Community Foundation for the year 2020. Is that correct?
That's the way it stands now. So the only thing I didn't know whether it's completely clear or not is once, once you qualify for a grant through the foundation, so once you would qualify for a Brant County grant, you're in the pot. So there's never enough money to cover everything. So then you, once you qualify though, and you, you do qualify, you are in that pot of money and then the pot of money gets divided up equally, you know, between the grants and things like that. Things that are the same, like in the Brantford, the villages are all the same, so they get the same amount of money, whether it's a little village or a big village, for the event of the villages. That was the only thing that was fair to do there. And we have things, again, in the county like that, too, where they're all for the good of one event and they would get treated the same. But we can, we can make up our own rules, but don't be, don't be confused with the mandate of the foundation is. It's to service Brantford, Brant County, Six Nations, New Credit. Ours would only be, like the Brantford grants only go to Brantford and the casino money only stays in Brantford. And our money would only stay in the county and we would determine what that county looked like and where the barriers of that county would be. As Councilor Chambers said, it might have to be bigger than the map of the county of Brant. It needs to be what we all agree as, as fair and, and workable. So that's the difference between our grant program and the Brant community, but it's what they do and they do it full-time and they do it very well. Any other questions before we vote? Councilor Miller first and then Councilor Chambers?
Just, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I, even if we don't go with, after the staff report, we don't go with Brant Community Foundation, just the fact that we're looking at it and trying to come up with our own criteria, I think is, is light years ahead of what we'll be doing later on tonight. So I appreciate it.
Good. Thank you. Councilor Chambers?
And I'll echo that sentiment. I just, as I was coming in, I, I think I understood another benefit to this thing is that people can make contributions to the foundation and that adds to the pot, which is a benefit that can be used quite readily.
Thank you very much for that.
Well, thank you, Joanne and Bill, for, for coming out tonight. I know it was short notice, but it was, it was very timely for our budget and for our grants tonight. So thank you for coming out and telling us about the foundation.
Thank you.
Oh, we have to make the vote. We have to, we have to have a vote. All those in favor of bringing your staff report back? Now, anybody opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Carrie, thank you. City of Brantford, I believe that's Joe. City of Brantford, I believe that's Joe.
So you have to bear with me. I'm not, I'm technically challenged. I have to click and talk at the same time. That might be a problem. So anyways, thank you so much, and good evening, Mr. Chair and members of council. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come here this evening and to share our 2019 budget proposal with you. We are very happy to report that we are coming in at a 1.9% decrease, and I'm sure that's not something that you hear very often. Before we begin our presentation, I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge you, council. I'd like to acknowledge your vision and your support that has always helped us and it's always helped steer us in the right direction. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the directors who are here with me this evening and who will probably help me answer some questions if they're too hard for me, and the Health and Human Services team. You have a team there that is committed to service, and they are a bunch of amazing people. And of course, I must say that I have to thank the county staff who are always willing to help and to partner with us, and that's why we can accomplish the things we do because So we are very proud to list for you one of our major accomplishments this year as being the John Noble Apartments. This 57-unit apartment is smoke-free, self-sustaining, and accessible. And if that's not enough reason to make you happy, it also results in a surplus to your budget annually. We are also happy to tell you that under the Provincial Social Housing Improvement Plan, we were able to refresh all the LED lighting at Trillium Way. As you all know, I'm sure, there is a lack of affordable housing, which is a crisis that in my close to 40 years, I've never seen... the rental rate right now occupancy is, if you needed to rent, is under 1%. So, you know, you can have people looking for housing and have 40, 50 people go to the same apartment to rent. And then on top of that, now, some landlords are asking for you to bring first and last month's rent with you when you apply, even if you haven't been granted the apartment. And so when you look at the beautiful people that we serve, sometimes it's very, very difficult for them to maneuver their way through such a difficult system. So through the Portable Housing Benefit, we administer a benefit that helps people on the waiting list. And what it does is it provides them a rent subsidy so that they can stay where they're living, but their rent becomes affordable. And this year, we identified 12 people who live in the county who would be eligible, and there are currently two people receiving that benefit right now. We're also happy to report to you that the Survivors of Domestic Violence Portable Housing Benefit has now become a permanent program through the province, and this benefit helps victims of abuse to receive a rent supplement as well so that when fleeing abuse, they can secure housing. And as many of you are aware, and a beautiful thing that we celebrate too is the Healthy Kids Community Challenge. In 2018, we launched our fourth theme for healthy kids, and it was called Power Off and Play. It had some great opportunities and programs for both the city and the county as we helped children reduce their screen time and get active. In March, we'll be working with your Community Relations Staff and the County of Brant Public Library to do another Healthy Kids Passport Challenge. I'm sure as some of you have read and through Social Services Committee are aware that we've recently transitioned to a new shelter system model, and we're currently working with the shelter systems to refine and develop a housing-first framework. This model focuses on helping people first, to find them housing and to support them, whoever they are, with whatever they're doing, whether they be suffering from an addiction or a mental health issue. This is not a program where someone deserves to be housed. Everyone deserves to be housed. So the model is you house the person first, and then you parachute all the services in to keep them housed. The shelters report that approximately 5% of the people seeking emergency shelter actually reside or come from the county. We also help other, with other eviction prevention services, such as if someone has rent arrears or hydro arrears, and we also advocate for clients who potentially could be faced with eviction as we speak to their landlord and try and see if we can get some kind of an understanding where perhaps we pay rent arrears for them and they're able to keep their apartment. As you also are aware too, we've been refreshing our service delivery model over the last two years. Our new How Can I Help You model aligns all income-tested programs, including Ontario Works Housing, homelessness, and subsidized childcare. Our new model reduces administrative work and provides an enhanced level of service for our clients. So right now, if you were to come into our office and you were to be seeking some childcare help or some Ontario Works help, you can get all that help in one place. If you call in, we do the same thing. So before you used to come in, and we used to book you an appointment to see a worker, now the worker sees you right away. And so this has eliminated a lot of appointment setting and missed appointment setting and resetting our appointments, and the client's feedback is that it's an amazing service and people's needs are being met that much quicker. So we are very, very proud of that new model that we've developed. And in fact, it is renowned across the province, if we may brag a little bit. Last year, we were asked to present at AMSA, the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association Conference, and we've received several requests to share our model across the province. So as the ministry works towards streamlining and modernizing its services and the services we deliver, we've put forward a request to be selected to pilot the reloadable payment card. This will see the elimination of paper checks. So the theory behind this is that people will get like a little bank card, and it gets recharged every month. So if you came to Social Services and watched what we did every month, every time, there's a check day. I live my life by check days. We don't go by the month. We say, what check day is it, right? And so people are stuffing checks, and you have to make sure that you don't stuff two checks together because there's confidentiality issues. So we're very happy about this. In the past, we've been able to pilot many things for the ministry, I think, again with your support. We've been able to be leaders. I know that when SAMS came into place, I know that many of you supported us in getting the minister to come to Brantford to hear the issues we were having, and as a result of that, we were selected to pilot a lot of things because Brantford had credibility in what it was saying. So on the childcare front, there's something else that we can be very, very proud of. Since 2014, we've increased licensed childcare spaces by 250 in the county, and that is amazing. Some of our more significant projects include, we funded $74,000 for a new playground and play-based materials at the Parrish Childcare, $48,000 for repairs and maintenance at St. George, and $17,000 for repairs and maintenance at the Burford Co-op. We also expanded early-on programs, adding six satellite offices, sites. In addition, we had more than 76 temporary or pop-up events in Mount Pleasant Nature Park and Mount Pleasant School, Burford Community Center, Sunny Hill Park in St. George, Lyons Park in Parrish, and Scotland Optimist Park. That's the priorities one, okay. So one of our priorities this year is to advocate for system stability. At this time, we still haven't had any announcement from the ministry around our funding and what our funding is going to look like. So if some of our funding is reduced or not available, we're concerned about our ability to build more affordable housing for, to supply rent subs, to support childcare spaces in our community, to support or continue to support our Be Homes Initiative, Ontario Renovates, and many, many other valuable services that we deliver. And our fear is without these investments, what you're going to see is more and more people facing homelessness. Another one of our priorities this year is to strengthen and continue strengthening, actually, the local services here in the county and our relationship with the county. County residents now receive children's services, income and employment services, there's an ODSP worker that comes once a week, and they also receive services to help maintain their housing. We currently support 92 families. Staff are on-site three to four days a week, and during 2018, we were able to prevent 19 families from being evicted, and we helped 36 individuals secure employment. We are very grateful to Leslie Head and her staff for not only sharing their space, but sharing their vision, and we appreciate their continued support. They're great partners to work with, so I thank you for that. So we'll also be focusing on the Wesley Live Well Program. They're providing some supportive housing for us, and we'll also be moving forward with the new construction at Marlene Ave. Marlene Ave is a 30-unit apartment that will house 30 of the more difficult-to-serve clients that we have in our programs today, and they will be surrounded by supportive workers there to help them maintain their housing. And we're also proud to say that Brantford was only, was one of two municipalities to be funded, both capital and operating funding, for the Home for Good program, and the anticipated date of completion is March 2020. So here's, I know what you really care about, right, which is the budget process. So what you can see here, most of the savings that you'll see on this slide are a result of the refreshing that I just explained to you a little while ago about how we did some restructuring. And as a result of that, we are able to provide a better service, and at the same time, we were able to reduce staff. So most of that is a result of the savings and the restructuring. And in the childcare line, you'll see that that is a decrease because the province wants a certain amount contributed by the municipalities, and this year, as you can see, I think it's $240 or something. It's minimal, but they did decrease our portion. And what you don't see on that slide is that, in fact, the province contributes $18 million towards childcare. So that's just amazing too. And our overall budget in social services is just over $75 million. So I just wanted to focus a little bit on the John Noble Apartments that were built this year, and because I wanted to showcase them and to congratulate you because, you know, it was your vision and your support and your encouragement that got us to where we are today. And I'm sure most of you have visited the John Noble Apartments, and if you haven't, you certainly should because they're beautiful, and they're something that you should be very, very proud of. The other good thing, which I'm sure you don't hear too often, is that this project actually came in on time and under budget. And we have, Mary Ellen isn't with us anymore, but I have to give her a shout-out because it was under Mary Ellen's leadership that we were able to accomplish that. And at these John Noble Apartments, there are three levels of rent that's paid there. You can either pay full market rent, you can have an affordable unit, which is 80% of the CMHC average market rents, or you can have a geared-to-income, which is 30% of your gross income. So what we call that, like, it's a mixed building, which allows the amount of rents to come in to support the build in perpetuity on its own. So it shouldn't be coming back to ask you for any funding on that project because I believe that the first year alone, the county would have seen approximately $41,000 in revenue, and I believe you do have a venture against that property as well. What I want to leave you with here is that we would strongly recommend that the county consider setting up an affordable housing reserve. At this time, I don't believe you have a reserve, but I think it's a good practice to start putting a little bit away so that when the time comes, you'll have a little bit of a nest egg to be able to put towards more affordable housing in the county. Most provincial grants and federal dollars that come down do want a contribution from the municipality, and usually, it's about 25%. So this is a good way, we think, for you to start, and we would ask you to consider And I think Sue Evenden's going to come up now and just say a few words around some of the services that her department provides, and she'll walk you through that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is always my great pleasure to be here to meet with you, at least annually, at budget time. And as a very happy resident of the County of Brant, I enjoy my two-block commute whenever I have a meeting in this building. This isn't a first, though. Tonight, I drove here in fear that I may not make it here without freezing if I walked. And thank you to our general manager for inviting me here to bring the mood of the room down just a little while we talk for a few minutes about some of the things that are challenging us in 2019 and beyond. We have already talked about the current operating environment with the change in provincial government. It is certainly very dynamic, and we certainly have not received assurance of the same level of funding we would hope for status quo funding for our provincial revenues, which, as you heard, are the great lion's share of our budget. Even so, the revenues that we are receiving provincially are not keeping pace with the need. And in fact, the slide that you saw talking about our budget reduction is really, I think, indicative of our general operating principles of trying to utilize the funds that we're entrusted with as best we can to meet the needs of the community. However, the needs of our communities are big, and in many ways, they are becoming bigger. And so this is a challenge that we have even at current levels of funding, and I would talk about homelessness funding as an example. Those members that are part of Social Services Committee may be aware or will become aware that the provincial share of homelessness funding is about 75%. So the city and county are already contributing about 25% of our homelessness funding. However, it is not keeping pace with the need. We have pressures in many aspects of the system that are related to, as you heard, the dire situation that people are facing with trying to obtain affordable housing. The affordable housing waitlist is at an all-time high. Singles will wait up to 10 years for placement in affordable housing. So we're not keeping pace with development of affordable housing, and that is definitely driving some of our homelessness issues. Pressures on our emergency shelters, which those, again, around the Social Services table will be hearing more about next week at the meeting. Pressures with trying to keep people housed, so paying for rental arrears, paying for utility disconnections, keeping up with outreach and trying to bring people in out of cold situations, getting them inside into shelters. All of those costs are increasing for sure. And we do have an ever-evolving landscape in terms of what's going on in our communities from a social and economic perspective. And one thing I would point to, for example, that I think members are well aware of, is continuing struggles with levels of opioid addiction, which are pressuring our services throughout the city and the county. We are, so we are dealing with some complex community needs, and because of the complexities of the needs that we're seeing with the individuals that we're serving, we are also very conscious of wanting to maintain the psychological safety and well-being of our staff. So our staff are often intervening in very serious and challenging situations. We do, unfortunately, quite a lot of support and intervention with individuals who are contemplating suicide, for example, who are in very concerning situations. contemplating suicide, for example, who are in very concerning situations. And all of those things take a toll on frontline staff who are hearing those kinds of stories. So one of our focus areas will be also training and offering different kinds of support to our staff in order to enable them to meet the challenges of their work. And I'm not sure which... I think I'm hitting the wrong button.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so we're into capital. Alrighty. Okay, so we're going to just go over the capital. So in 2019, we'll be transferring $379,000 from the operating to capital, and that's to make sure that our housing stock is in a good state of repair. And I can also tell you that I think we do a pretty awesome job keeping our stock in good repair, and that is because of the great work that the property managers and the people in the housing division are committed to making sure that people can be proud of where they live and where they, the place they call home. While we await funding from the province, because we don't know whether or not we're going to be getting any new dollars to do any building, we will be applying to CMHC to get some seed funding, so that we can begin the preliminary planning and design work in 2020 for Trillium Way. The idea is, of course, that there would be a new build on Trillium Way, and that's designated to be the next build. As well, the existing building at Trillium Way will be undergoing a significant renovation with the exterior insulation finishing system. Try and say that quick. Which will result in better tenant comfort, reduced operating costs, and an update to the facade. And that project is very, very expensive. It's close to a million dollars to get that work done. We'll also be updating and modernizing the elevator at Walker's Green. That elevator has reached the end of its life cycle, and whenever you replace an elevator, it's a big deal. And so we have to make sure that our communication, and we will be making sure that all the tenants know when it's going to happen, how it's going to happen. We're going to find out what their needs are, and we will be helping them during that time when the elevator is out of order and being repaired. And that should take about five weeks, and we anticipate it to start in the summer sometime, and, like I said, take five, six weeks to complete. Okay, so we believe, and I'm sure that you do as well, that a thriving and inclusive community is measured by its desire and its actions to care and support the most vulnerable amongst them. Under council's leadership and vision, the county can be proud to say that it is just that community. In summary, I would like to congratulate and thank council and staff and your community for having achieved such a high grade in overall performance. Our unified vision is a clear indication, an illustration, of our joint passion, compassion, and courage to change words into action, so that together, we can strengthen the social, mental, and economic well-being of all citizens. And we look forward to what 2019 has in store for all of us. And at this point, I welcome any questions that you may have.
Questions to Joe, Mark LeFerrier.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Your honor.
I feel like I'm at court again. Just a question here, with a little context. You had, those of us who are on Social Services attend a, we attended a information session to catch us up. So there are less than 100 units of public housing in the county, and over 600 county residents on that waiting list. You talked about in your presentation, provincial and federal funding opportunities require a sort of 25% share from the municipality. When councilors Gatward, Miller, McAlpine, and myself attended the Housing, the National Housing Day Conference, we heard from provincial and federal representatives who deal with the decision-making at that level about who gets what for affordable housing funding. And they had mentioned that one of the reasons that the county loses out on this sort of funding often is because of a lack of public transit system and a lack of amenities. Grocery stores, also a lack of amenities for public health. We are currently deciding on some issues around public transit. Good news, Ride Norfolk is going to have at least two stops in the county, in Oakland and Mount Pleasant, it sounds like. And we're looking at a e-hailing system for public transit. We're also looking at a community health hub. I guess my question is this, in the time period that we're in right now under this budget, I don't know that we're going to be, you know, able to procure, you know, a fund for another, the rainy day fund for housing. But it won't matter if we don't have public transit and a community health hub. So would those be services that would make sense as part of a more ambitious, public affordable housing program, for funding in any way, from the county? Are those things we should be seeing as priorities to see us getting affordable housing, more affordable housing as a county?
Thank you for that question. I would maybe refer to Adam on this, but I would tell you that, as far as I know, that doesn't affect, when we get our funding for the city and the county, it's one envelope of funding, and then we decide, based on our priorities, where that next build will be. And of course, if you provide transit and you do all those things, I mean, that would enhance your community on every level. It'll help people get employed, it'll help people not have social isolation, it helps all those things that you were just referring to. But I don't believe that it would affect our ability to garner any additional dollars from the province or the federal government, no. But I would encourage you to keep on that.
We were told directly from the person from the...
Adam can speak to it. Perhaps I'm not, perhaps I'm wrong, so Adam can certainly...
Said that rural communities specifically lose out on this funding because they don't tend to have public transit or community health care.
Sure, Adam can speak to that. Adam is our new director.
Yeah, CMHC and other funding groups.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I am the new director of housing, Adam Sweetland. You are actually right, in some respects, that federal funding through CMHC has attached priorities around things like transit, location, and to amenities like healthcare. But our experience has been that there is a lot of service manager flexibility that comes with funding from the province, and certainly, they do encourage us to look at our local needs. So as much as we have service manager flexibility for provincial funding, we would be encouraging new bills in the county as well as the city, as long as they meet the needs that we've established in our local housing plans, so.
So even though Adam is right, I would tell you that our next build is scheduled to be in the county, and that's based on what we decided, right? Between the city and the county and what our needs were locally. And I'm sure, Adam, that that has some kind of an effect on whether or not perhaps we get it. But in the past, I don't have that information that it's ever affected something that, when we've put forward a funding proposal. In fact, like I said, you know, we've gotten them before, and even with the John Noble one as well.
Councilor Gatward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Joe. Thank you for that presentation and the good news about the 1.9% decrease. Can you tell us how many dollars that translates to, the 1.9% decrease?
I'll have to look to Kathy.
Or perhaps...
Cortasia.
Staff can. Okay, while that's being checked into, my next question is, the build at Trillium Way that's proposed, how many units are there spaced for there? What is the proposed number of units?
Oh, yeah, okay. I don't know, Adam. How many?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two units? That's great, thank you. And the 1.9%, do you have that now?
Yeah, it's on the slide, actually. $41,932.
It's right at the bottom, Joe.
Yep, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Oh, right there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I didn't see it either.
And my last question, the shelter review that we did, I was involved with that, and I was pleased to read in the newspaper that everyone is finding shelter. And is that true this week when the temperature has dipped so far?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it remains true that we have been able to shelter anyone in need. But what I can tell you is, it's tight, right? The whole shelter review has resulted in us doing some amazing work, going out onto the street, other community members now. We have a lot of people that are actually going out, who are volunteering per se, and they're going out trying to find the homeless, perhaps, that we don't have contact with. And we're seeing more and more people coming into the shelter system who actually are feeling quite safe and comfortable there, because they have a warm bed, three meals, and they're getting supported. And some of them are saying, I don't want to leave, because, you know, I don't know where I'll go, where I'll be able to live like this. And so what we can say is that regardless of what the numbers are, no one will be out in the cold. We will find places for people to stay. But right now, we are hovering almost at capacity, but that changes every day. Like tomorrow, we're expecting about 10 people to leave, and so it fluctuates. But to date, we've been able to house everyone that's required housing. But the bigger problem is, is affordable housing and places for people to go, because what's happening is people are getting bottlenecked in the system, right? They come in, they want to go somewhere, but where do you go? Like even today, to get, even in a rooming house, you're looking at about $600 a month. And on OW, you get seven-something if you're single. So it is very difficult for people to find places to live, and that is a big problem for us.
Thank you.
Councilor Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the delegation. First and foremost, thank you very much for what you folks do. My question is regarding, you said the children's services, you said it wasn't on here, the province is $18 million, you said it puts in. Can you give me just some sort of idea as to how that would be dispersed?
Okay, Kathy. She's the childcare expert.
Thank you.
She's the director of childcare, so, and she loves to talk about childcare.
I do, too. I think you for that question. So we do get a service contract with the province, and roughly, it's about $18 million that we received in 2018, and we're hoping to still receive in 2019. And with those dollars, we have a variety of things we fund. So we fund special needs resourcing. So for children that are in childcare that need supports, we fund that. We fund general operating dollars. So when you look at the child cares in the community, if we didn't fund for general operating dollars, the per diems would be very, very high. And so we provide operating dollars to help with wages and costs, to keep those rates lower for everybody in the community. And then fee subsidies for families that can't afford it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor Chambers.
This is a question through you to Joe, and it's my annual "Follow the Money" question. The way I understand it is that there is a Social Services Committee, there are representatives from the county and the city on that committee. That committee reports to the city, and the city makes determinations on whether the recommendations are followed or not.
That is correct. We are the consolidated municipal service manager appointed by the province to look after you and the city.
So one of the controls that the county has is the budget amount. We have to approve the budget amount, but we don't necessarily get to approve the programming, the capital, where the capitals are expended, et cetera.
No, that would be, well, through the budget process at the city and Social Services Committee.
We approve the budget.
Yes.
We have the authority to approve our portion of the budget. That's correct.
That's correct. I'm not sure, I'd have to ask, actually refer to Kathy, but if you didn't pay for it, I'm not sure what kind of a problem that would create.
I'm not, what I'm getting at is, the city is the controller of the programming, and we have input into that.
Absolutely.
But we don't get to approve the recommendations here at this table that go to the city.
Correct.
So, that being said, if the county wanted to have a, what I'll call a social program, hypothetically around mental health, to benefit the county residents, we essentially would be on our own in funding that, if we wanted to develop a program in the county for county residents. That is not part of this particular budget.
That is correct.
And likewise, the same thing would apply to the city. They could have a citywide program that caters to city residents only, and they would pay for that themselves.
That is correct. What we do in unison, like, for instance, we have an addiction and mental health department at Social Services, but it services the county and the city.
And I guess my request always is that the Social Services Administration keeps the funding in place for, if it's a city project benefiting only the city, or if it's a county project benefiting only the county, that the city isn't paying for county programs necessarily, and the county isn't paying for the city programs necessarily. And I always bring that to everybody's attention, because what we don't want is being charged in this budget amount for programs that do not apply to the county.
I would tell you through the chair that I feel completely confident that that's not happening.
And we go back a long way, I think, back to the...
I think you hired me 39 years ago.
I think I did, as a matter of fact.
Yes, you did.
Because it used to be a county department back in the good old days, when the workers used to put purple stickers on folders.
What a good memory.
Yeah, that was a...
Now we have, now we call it a purple sticker room, so, color's still purple. So thank you for that question, thank you.
And thank you for the good work you do, and be prepared for the same question next year.
Councilor Wheat.
I should know by now.
Well, thank you, Joe. And unfortunately, Mary Ellen McClellan has retired, but to try and make this council feel a little bit more comfortable that we're being dealt with fairly, if you'll recall, a year ago, we were looking at elevator repairs at Russell Heights in St. George, and Social Services in the city stepped up to the plate, led by Mary Ellen. And we got $65,000 towards that elevator from Social Services. So the county does get a couple cents here and there if we present our case properly, even though we're outnumbered at the committee, four to three. But if the three that we have present their case well, we're dealt with fairly, and thank you very much. And it's unfortunate, Mary Ellen, but she didn't quit, she retired.
She retired, yes.
She retired, but she got the job done at Russell Heights in St. George, of course.
She did. Through the chair, could I just say something? I just want to, and maybe I haven't communicated this enough, but I want you to feel very confident that the work we do, I mean, I guess for me, I say this at the beginning of all my presentations, is I started here, and the county always has a special place in my heart. And I don't see the county or the city any different. I deliver a service, and I deliver it where I need to deliver it, to who I need to deliver it, and I don't, I don't look at them differently. To me, it's all one body. I mean, to me, we love all people, and whether they live in the city or the county, it doesn't matter to us. We just want to do the best job we can and be the best people to serve, because that is the best vocation anyone can have, is one of servanthood. So I just want to make sure you knew that.
Thank you. Councilor Ferrier.
Just to reaffirm this, those of us who were at the Social Services Info Meeting, we asked a lot of questions around what were the percentages of what the county funds versus the city, and also what was the percentage of residents from the county utilizing the services versus residents from the city. In almost every category, we got a deal, in that we either funded less and had more county residents than percentage of funding, with the exception of possibly the raw housing numbers, but there's a lot of factors to that. There's a lot of special bylaw, the 20-year bylaw agreements that aren't counted in that, so we'd have to take a fuller look in that, and we hopefully will. But just, I guess there isn't really a question, or so I have to make one up. Was that what happened at the Social Services Info Night? Was that what happened at the Social Services Info Night?
It certainly was, yes. And you were very enthusiastic, so that was very good, yes.
Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Joe. I think you guys got probably one of the most challenging portfolios from where I sit. And I really appreciate you telling us that we should have an affordable housing reserve. And what I'm looking for in the next four years from social housing, and I think we've got some pretty good representatives on there from the county, I think you would agree.
Yes.
I'm looking to you, and I'm looking to your directors, Kathy, Susan, Aaron, Adam. I want you guys, I know we're there to oversee you and all that, but I want you to push us as well, and I don't want an answer tonight or answers, but I want you guys, you and your directors, to think about ways that we at the county can make Social Services work a lot better at the county. You've got space at the Paris Office, is it enough? Are you there enough days? Should we have another one? Should we have public transportation? There's a whole bunch of things anyways. I want you guys to push us for the next four years, so that's all.
I promise to push you.
Seeing no other questions from council, I'd like to thank you, and we have a 40-year friendship
We do.
...with you and your family and me.
Yes.
And I sleep while at night knowing you're in control of this whole thing. It's a touchy game, and I'm glad that you're at the helm, so
Well, thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for tonight.
Thank you.
We've come to the part of the agenda where we're going to have a presentation of the capital budget. I'm going to call on Michael Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor Bailey, and I'm just going to speak briefly on a few things, including our introduction to the capital budget, and then Robin's going to come up and take my place here and walk us through a presentation that was distributed earlier. So I just wanted to, first of all, mention that this budget, as I communicated early in the budget process, is part budget and part orientation. So Robin will spend a little more time tonight on some of the background feeders into the capital budget as an orientation event for our new members of council. I wanted to just mention that you saw the staff putting lots of new paper into your binders, there's some changes, minor changes to certain sheets, and so we've included them in the binders. There's a couple of bigger changes as well that I wanted to point out. So the first one, I would draw your attention to the new, your revised sheet number 1-3, you don't have to open it right now, but sheet 1-3 is revised. And what it does is it shows a base budget coming in impacting the average tax bill at a 1.2% decrease. So that's our starting point with the base budget, an average tax bill. If you just approved the base budget, it would go down 1.2%. So that's the first thing I wanted to mention. And then if you go to page 11-2, which is also a new page, and it's at the front of your decision packages, and it has a small chart on it, and what it does is it shows what the impact of the base budget is on an average tax bill. It shows all of the decision packages that have been presented now, and there's a few extras that I'll talk about in a few moments. And then it shows the total net levy impact that if all these decision packages were approved would have on an average tax bill, and that would be a 3.1% increase. So that's for your information, just some additional information that we've put into the budget. So then there is a new 11-3 and 11-4, which is the list of the decision packages, and at the end of that list, there are four new decision packages that came out of our previous discussions. So there's one on the shared river wall, the wall up here at Two Rivers, the road speed control package, composter and rain barrel promotion, and the Scotland Optimist Playground. And we actually, for the last two, we looked at some possible reserve funding for those so that they wouldn't have a tax levy impact, but we'll get to those at a future meeting. That's all I wanted to mention at this point, Mayor Bailey, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robin, who's going to take my seat here and walk us through the capital budget presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2019 draft capital budget overview. So as you can see on the budget process map, that we're here at January 30th, capital budget and grants. So we'll go through the capital budget highlights. So if you go to section 12 in your binder, the capital budget is laid out on pages 12-1 to 12-12. The totals on page 12-12 correspond to this slide. So the intent is not to go through each line of the capital budget, but we'll review the funding sources at a high level. So the capital budget can be broken down into two areas, existing, which includes replacement and maintenance of existing assets, which are part of the asset management plan, and new capital, which are listed in your capital section of the binder, unless they have a levy impact, and then there will be a decision package for those. So the categories here, I think you can see along the top here, those correspond to what's in your binder, and we'll go through each one of those funding sources throughout the Just going to go back one slide. So you can see here that the County of Brant is committed to meeting the goal of $9.2 million in 2019 with inflationary increases through its original asset management plan. So these funds are to be used for replacing or upgrading existing assets that are funded from the tax levy. So legislation requires municipalities to undertake a much more detailed asset management plan over the next four years. So as you can see, under the green heading, the capital levy, that $9.3 million, and you can see on our overall capital, sorry, operating budget, the transfer to capital line with the same number, the $9,342,771 that corresponds to the asset management plan So the second funding source is reserves, and this diagram you've seen previously in the budget overview from two weeks ago. So we have reserve and reserve funds, which are broken out into reserves and reserve funds, I just said that, and the reserve funds are then further divided into obligatory reserve funds and discretionary reserve funds. So to refresh your memory, reserves are an allocation of accumulated net revenue, they're not associated with any specific asset, they're generally used to mitigate the impact of fluctuations in operating costs and revenue, and examples include reserves for elections or insurance claims. And reserve funds are segregated and restricted to meet a specific purpose, their money's set aside either by a bylaw of the municipality or by requirements of the provincial legislation. So obligatory reserves are created when a provincial statute requires revenue received for special purposes to be segregated from the general revenues of the municipality. They can only be used for the prescribed purpose, and an example of that would be development charges or building stabilization. And discretionary reserve funds are established based on council direction, and they're used to finance future expenditures such as equipment replacement. This list shows the estimated balances of reserves at the end of December 31st, 2018. Of the 47.6 million balance, the majority of that is made up of the Brant County Power Sale Funds, which is $31.3 million and is fully invested with LAS. The reserve fund balances, which are for a specific purpose, are totaling $2.5 million, and you can see the breakdown of how those are divided up. You'll notice that many of the development charge reserves are overdrawn, and this is because the county needs to put services in the ground before being able to collect the development charges. And over the next few years, we expect to see these reserves back in the black. All of this is clarified and supported in the development charge background study. So federal gas tax. This tax is a long-term predictable source of funding to help build and revitalize infrastructure. It was legislated as a permanent source of federal infrastructure funding with flexibility in the types of projects that can be funded. So these funds have been earmarked for various roads projects, which you can see on pages 12-8 and 12-9 in the binder. The federal gas tax is funded through the federal government, who charges an excise tax of 10 cents per liter on gasoline and 4 cents per liter on diesel. And the table at the bottom of this slide demonstrates the historical amounts we've received and the amounts that we anticipate to receive in the future. So development charges. I think you've all been educated on what development charges are with Watsons that came in and did a council education session with you, so I'm not going to go through the details of what they are, but a large portion of these are earmarked for Restakers Road Widening, the Bishop's Gate Road Interchange, and the King Edward Street Improvements So debt to cover post-period development charges. So post-period benefit refers to the cost of development related to servicing capacity, which is not required by the development anticipated over the planning periods that will clearly benefit development in a subsequent planning period, and therefore should be funded partially by subsequent development. So most of these funds, again, are for development related to the Restakers Widening, the Bishop's Gate Interchange, and the King Edward Street Improvements. For debentures. So debentures can only be utilized for capital and can be issued once the project is complete or nearly complete. Debt servicing costs must be included in the operating budget, and the province puts a cap on the amount of debt that a municipality can issue, known as the annual repayment limit, which we did cover at our session a couple weeks ago. So the bulk of debentures in the budget are for the Health Hub at $10.7 million, the Restakers Widening at $1 million, and the Biggers Lane landfill expansion at $500,000. So again, this is a refresh of what you saw in the budget overview. The annual repayment limit is the maximum amount that a municipality can pay in principal and interest payments in the year for debt without first obtaining approval from the Ontario Municipal Board. And the formula is 25% of our annual own-source revenues, which includes property taxes, user fees, and investment income, and is determined by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And on a go-forward basis, our own-source revenues are increasing annually, which translates into an increase in the ARL limit. So our current annual repayment limit is $13,391,142, which is the debt servicing cost that would be in the operating budget. When you translate that into the maximum debt, if you use a 20-year term based on 5% interest rate, that equates to $166,883,224 in debt. So on this slide, this is a summary of our current debt. The table summarizes our debt picture, and it's broken down in three sections. One is debt outstanding at December 31st, 2018. Then we have approved debt, which is to be issued in 2019, and then we have approved debt that's to be issued beyond 2019. So keep in mind, once debt is approved, it still isn't issued until the project is complete or nearly complete. So again, you'll see our total debt that's approved is at $98.3 million, and our limit is $166 million. So federal grants, sorry, federal and provincial grants. So there are two grants included in the federal and provincial grants. One is the OSIF grant at $1.05 million, and the Federal Natural Disaster Mitigation Grant This slide demonstrates the grants received in 2018 and the anticipated funding we should receive in 2019. So you can see the OSIF grant on there for $1.05 million, and the Federal Natural Disaster Mitigation Program at $540,000. We're also showing $119,749 for the provincial gas tax grant, but that is not included in our capital budget, it's actually part of a decision package that you'll see in your binder. So the key capital grants, as I mentioned, the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, OSIF, it's a formula-based funding, and it provides a steady source of predictable, long-term infrastructure funding to small rural and northern communities to build and repair roads, bridges, and other critical infrastructure. So the fund has increased from $100 million per year to $300 million per year in the 2018-19 budget. So you can see the increase from 2018 to 2019 is quite a substantial increase that we will be receiving. So the Ontario gas tax, municipalities can use gas tax towards local public transit priorities. So for every liter of gasoline sold, Ontario currently provides 2 cents to municipalities, and the distribution is formula-based on 70% ridership and 30% population. And beginning in 2019, Ontario will gradually increase the municipal share of the gas tax up to 4 cents per liter. So for us, the Ontario gas tax of the $119,000 is included in the decision package for the Brant eRide program, which again is on page 11-7 in your binder. So there's various sources of donations received to help offset the costs of specific projects. You can see in this table that there's several service clubs and developers that have donated for specific projects. Investment income. Investment income comes from the Brant County Power Sale Funds that are invested with LAS. The BCP Fund Policy lays out how these funds can be used. Before the sale, the county received a dividend from the BCP, and the investment income is first to match the previous dividend that went into the operating budget, and the balance can be used for capital. So in this case, you can see that there's $179,284 that we are using in the capital So the funds have been allocated to capital projects that benefit the county as a whole, not specific departments. So for example, we've allocated them to computers, which benefit the entire county and municipal office buildings. So follow-up questions. There were a number of questions asked by councilors, so we'll address them through this presentation for the entire group, so that everyone has the same information. And it should be noted, staff is here, so if there's any questions that arise from these questions, that they'd be more than happy to answer. So the first one. How is the work on bridges prioritized, and what is the allocation method? So on a biannual basis, a consultant completes an OSIM inspection, which is the Ontario Structure Inspection Manual, which prioritizes the bridges or the bridge needs for the budget, and they're categorized based on immediate need, one to five years, and six to 10 years. Next question. What are the issues with the Mechanic Street footbridge, and why does it need to be replaced, and will it be a like-for-like replacement? So the footbridge needs a new deck and possibly some work to the underside of the bridge. The deck replacement is currently being researched by a consultant to determine the best materials and approach for the work to be completed. So the community Health Hub, why do we include $10.7 million in 2019 when the work will extend into 2021? Is this a commitment budget or an expense budget? I understand that a campaign to raise funds will also be launched, but I do not see any amounts assumed. So the $10.7 million is budgeted, and you'll see it's under the category of debt, so it doesn't hit the tax levy. The debt will be issued after the project is complete, so that won't actually happen until probably 2021. And the fundraising estimates were approximately $1 million, and they have already been taken into account. into account in the business plan, so the $10.7 million is net of fundraising. So what process determines what is funded by debenture versus the capital levy? So the capital levy funding includes only the asset management plan projects. That includes the maintaining and replacing of current infrastructure. And debentures are issued in accordance with the debt management plan. So what process determines what is funded by reserves versus capital levy? So many departments use reserves like a savings account to purchase items in the future. The department will transfer an amount from the operating budget to a reserve on an annual basis, then use that reserve to make a major purchase. An example of this would be the vehicle replacement reserve or ambulance equipment, et cetera. And the reserves are governed by the reserve management plan. So what determines what is funded by investment income, and where does the investment income come from? Well, the investment income is generated by the Brant County Power Sale Funds that we talked about a moment ago. Council approved a report in November 2014 that indicates annual returns for the fund be applied to maintenance, management, and improvement of County of Brant assets. And staff have historically distributed the funds to assets that benefit the entire So the roads budget. How do we prioritize the spending on roads, and what is the allocation mechanism? Staff relies on the countywide State of the Infrastructure Report, also known as the Road Needs Study, which assesses, then rates, all of the county roads and places them into categories to prioritize, whether they need full reconstruction, surface lift, or asphalt, et cetera. Debt to cover post-period DCs. Is it paying forward for infrastructure that can be reclaimed from future DCs? So essentially, yes. Future DCs will pay for the debt issued for the infrastructure that will be used by future development. And why is there such a large non-reserve funding requirement for wastewater? I thought we had to save enough in reserves to pay for all capital work. Wastewater is funded from development charges, reserves, debt, and debt to cover the post-period development charges. Debt is required to fund the OPP station servicing and the Canesville Fire Hall servicing as development charges are not sufficient to cover the entire costs. Roads budget. Can we really spend 10 million on Restakers Road Widening in 2019? Have we considered phasing? As I was led to believe, it was a two-year project. So the funding for this project is 3.51 million from development charge reserves and 6.49 million from debt. None of that is levy. So the debt won't be issued until the project is done. So you could essentially phase this budget if you wanted. You could say 10 or 5 million in 2019 and 5 million in 2020, but there's no real benefit to doing that because it doesn't hit the levy, and the debt isn't issued until it's So the five-year budget. So that is basically a conceptual placeholder where things will move in and out over the years. So there's a number of questions regarding this five-year recreation budget. What is the 11 million for Field House Turf Facility, and can we spend 11 million on a single facility in one year? So the turf facility was identified by the consultant undertaking the Recreation Facilities Review, and it would be located behind the BSC. These are projected future needs, and as yet, final costs and final funding are still to be determined. Recreation budget. Where is the still-lapsed renovation? So there is money in the budget under 2019 and 2020 for the design. There hasn't been an amount put in yet for the cost of the actual construction or renovation because the context of the project changed at the end of 2018 with the addition of the library. So that's still a moving target, and we don't have any good number to put behind that. And do we attempt to maintain a more or less level spend profile over the five years? The current proposed budget shows much reduced spending in the last two years of the budget. Is this an opportunity for phasing? Well, each year further from the current year is more uncertain in terms of priorities. If only the current year portion of a capital project is approved, and this speaks to phasing, there is a risk that the final years may not be approved by a new council. As most capital projects are funded by means other than the levy, phasing would have no impact on the current budget, but creates a risk as to their completion. And that was the end of those questions, and if you have any additional questions.
Are there any additional questions to Robin? Councillor Pearce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Robin. Back on page 24 there, donations, recoveries, and other. Where it's got, for example, King Edward Powerline and Arlington Parkway from the developers. Those are actual donations from the developers, or are those through development charges?
Those are donations from the developers.
Interesting. Thank you.
Councillor Gatward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to find the reserve or the page that showed all the red. Here it is. Okay. Page 12. The Police Development Charge Reserve is shown as $494,789 in the red. Can you please tell me why?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The development charges, some of them are in the red because we haven't collected the development charges yet. But we had to put the services in the ground so that the development can happen. So that costs money, yet we haven't collected the money that will offset those costs yet.
We don't have the services in the ground yet for the police station.
This isn't, I'm not sure which specific one you're...
Pardon? This is shown at the end of 2018.
There's other things that have to happen besides just putting the services in the ground. There's the various studies that have to be done, the archaeological studies, those kinds of things, the design, all that will still come out of the development charges.
The purchase of the land, was that covered by the previous money that had been budgeted for a number of years?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. Michael's nodding his head, yes.
It was covered by the previously budgeted. Okay, so could I please have a breakdown of that number, how it was arrived at? You don't have to give it to me right now, but... Thank you.
Any other questions for Robin? Councillor Chambers?
Thanks, Mayor Bailey. Through you to Robin. You alluded in your presentation to two things, a debt management plan and a reserve management plan. So my first question is, can you just elaborate a little bit on what each of those are and what that encompasses?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If you look at the Financial Sustainability Quick Guidelines, it highlights in there the highlights of the debt management plan and the reserve management plan. I don't have it in front of me. I think you probably have one in your drawer.
It used to be planted on our, whatever these things are called, but it's disappeared.
Do you need... Okay, I can make sure you have another copy. I think we distributed some the other week, but if you're missing yours, I'll make sure you get one.
Okay. And that, here it comes right now. There it is.
There it is.
Is that mine, or that is that?
That is.
There it is. Okay, so that covers those two questions. And my last question is with regard to debt. At one time, municipalities used to brag about having no debt, and that's not that long ago. Wardens inaugural addresses used to cherish the fact that the county was not in debt, and that was a gold star. That seems to have changed, and our debt load is, first, is it increasing, which I believe it is? And at what point in that trend of increasing debt do we hit a red line barrier and start to worry about being in debt? Not that we should always be worried about being in debt, if you listen to the conventional wisdom.
So Michael and I had a conversation about this earlier today, and we talked about that through a strategic planning exercise, you would have a look at that, have a look at your debt, have a look at your reserves, and come to some kind of philosophy on when you would transfer or shift into using more reserves than debt. And I think Michael has got something to add to that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I could. Maybe the first part of the answer to the question, I think you're correct, municipalities didn't used to have a lot of debt. And I remember hearing stories that municipalities would issue a lot of short-term debentures over the counter for short-term borrowing, and other than that, there wasn't too much debt. What changed is the provincial contribution to the municipal capital budgets, where the upper levels of government used to pay 2/3 of the freight of capital. And that changed in the 1990s, and so too did borrowing ability of municipalities through the Infrastructure Ontario Dementia Program to be able to get secured very long-term debt through Infrastructure Ontario as the conduit into bank debt. So that's what's changed. Municipalities lacking that large contribution from upper levels of government have had to use debt to basically continue to build infrastructure. High-growth municipalities like the county will have more debt because they've got more infrastructure problems going on. And a lot of your debt, as the chart shows, is in development charges and rate-based debt. And that's for new infrastructure, a lot of it fueling growth. So that's the reason why municipalities have debt, and the county may have more debt than some of its peer municipalities or some other municipalities of its size because it's a high-growth municipality. I think if we benchmarked ourselves against some high-growth municipalities, we'd be right in line with them. So the question is, how much debt should we have? And as I mentioned, Robin and I chatted about this today, we chatted about it quite a bit. And we do think that council through strategic planning needs to think about its future debt, because most of the debt that we're taking on outside of that high-growth, that growth-related infrastructure debt is for new infrastructure, things like OPP stations and fire halls and arenas and community centers and a range of smaller new projects. And I think that this council will have to grapple with, it's got a lot of new projects, and I mentioned this in my introductory comments to the budget, a lot of new projects, you know, evolving through different studies and through different community needs and coming forward by the community. And we're going to need to have a good discussion whether we want to continue to fund those with debt and increase our debt load, or whether we want to increase the capital budget, or whether we want to use reserves. And I think that's probably not a discussion for a budget, but it is a discussion for strategic planning because that needs to become, as Robin said, a philosophy going forward. And so we would propose to have that conversation through the strategic planning process. We'll all be bringing a report on probably this month to trigger, so hopefully that answers the question.
And just one last question. Who waves the red flag if we pass the point of where it shouldn't be? Is that the treasurer, the council? Who waves the red flag? Because I don't have enough information to wave it myself, and I don't want to have it waved at me when it's too late, and that's why we need to talk about things like this. And it's nice to say that we'll talk about it, but we haven't talked about it yet for this, you know what I'm, you understand what I'm saying. I don't want to be surprised, and I want to know who I should be talking to or the council should be talking to, who has the red flag that hopefully never gets waved, but who does?
Well, part of the debt management plan is a requirement to bring a report to council every year on our debt situation. And as well, it is incumbent upon the treasurer to provide an update on the ARL after any time there is a request for debt to be approved.
Councillor Ferrier?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to staff. Two questions. One, I'm looking at, it might be helpful for the public at large if we had a number that sort of compared the real, sort of the actual debt versus the debt that we're incurring because of a stopgap for developmental charges. I think that'd be helpful to be able to communicate if that's possible, because some people will see these debt numbers and say, oh, my goodness. And if we're able to say, well, X amount of that is because it's money that's incoming, it's just we have to spend it now in order to get it later, and have that clear, I think that would really help. And then my other question is about the parks and trails items in the budget. I see 12-19 here, PRT, Parks, Rec, and Trails, that in 2019, we're looking at a little over 1 million. In 2020, we're looking at 3.5 million almost, and in 2021, we're looking at 2.5, 2.6 million. Is some of that just the natural timing of when things need to be refreshed? Is some of that, basically, what's the reason for that big discrepancy? And is there a potential to maybe in the future, look at spreading that more evenly over the years? Because I think that's a huge jump for two years, and then it goes back down to 1 million. What's the reason for that? Or do we have a lot of equipment that just needs to be replaced around that time, or do we have a lot of, is this on a schedule that I'm not aware of?
I think I will call upon the general manager if I'm that area to respond to that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So discussing the capital plan with staff, I think there were some other projects that staff wanted to move forward this year, but there was kind of some unexpected demand for additional lighting for ball fields, and that was a pretty significant amount that we felt needed to be moved up to the 2019 budget, which pushed out some projects that we thought could wait into 2020, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, through you. I think I just had a quick look at the list. There is a number of new parks in that 2021 period that will be funded by development charges. So I think because as we, as we're in this big growth period, we've got a lot of subdivisions triggering, usually the last thing that happens is the subdivision gets finished, and then we build the park. And so that's, there's quite a bit, a number of those in that 2021 period. And if I could just answer the first question that you asked about qualifying that debt, we've actually done that, and we used to have a slide with a graph on it. We took it out because we thought it didn't add a lot of value, and it clearly would have added a lot of value. So if somebody can pass me the...
What page is that?
What page is that, Robin? The presentation. Page 19? 19. So I'm just going to point, because we've been, we've been kind of dividing our debt into three categories for several years to help explain the message. So it's page 19 of the capital presentation, but I'll just point to them. So the first one we've been talking about is tax-supported debt. And this is, this is our new infrastructure. This is our new infrastructure that falls outside of what we need to grow, and then I'll talk about this other category in a little bit. And this is things like arenas and our OPP station, and new fire halls and community centers, our gravel-to-hardtop program, we funded some of that with that. And there's a host of other projects in there. And they're what we, what our community wants to make the community a better place to live. And so, you know, that's, that's a piece of our debt picture. The second piece, we've called it investment debt. And this is debt that we rose as a municipality to generate new revenue. So the investment in the site development of the Brant 403 Business Park is in there. I think the solar project, a suite of solar projects is in there. And that investment debt is paying for itself. It all had business plans, and those business plans said, if you raise this money and invest in this infrastructure, you'll have cash flow that will pay for the debt and generate a surplus. And in fact, all those business plans, and we report on those every once in a while, they are all, they're all truing up. And then the last piece is what we talked about, DC or rate-based debt. And this is debt that we take on through another process, a rate-based system that has a cost recovery mechanism built into it. It has either a water, wastewater rate structure, or it has development charge rates. And the debt is included in those, in those rate structures, those rate systems, and to build that infrastructure and to collect money to pay that debt off. So that does, we've been, we've been explaining our debt in those three categories for a number of years now, and I do think it helps to... uh, to, to communicate that, that, you know, some of this debt, uh, is, is, is to grow, and the, the, the users, either the new residents or the users of the water and wastewater will pay for that debt, and then some of it is, was, was designed to make money, and we're making the money to pay for that debt, and then some of it was, was for existing taxpayers and future taxpayers, uh, to enjoy new services, uh, enhanced services. Hopefully that makes a little sense, more sense, and what we can do is next year, we'll include the pie chart that, that made that a lot easier to, to explain some.
Can, can I just add a little bit to that? Those categories and the philosophy behind debt are all outlined in that, uh, debt management plan, and I know you've all got the, the little, uh, cheat sheets, but, um, perhaps we should provide, um, a copy of both the debt management and the reserve management plans, maybe in the Friday files, so everybody has, has them again.
Counselor Gatward?
And, and perhaps that would address my question. Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to our CAO, you said that the, um, various categories, um, the revenue that comes in is paid off towards the debt. Is there a column somewhere in here that shows what we paid off the debt in 2018, and why, and where the money came from?
Through, your, your, Mr. Mayor, through you, this is just a, a statement of your current debt position. Um, the, you know, the servicing of debt is in the operating budget, and it was in the municipal finance section of your operating budget, and I think the treasurer did walk through that, uh, back at the last meeting, so.
I'll have to have another look at it. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers?
Thank you, and, and I'll make my, my pitch again about analytics. That, when I look at the total debt approved of, of 98, uh, plus, that's a nice number. Doesn't mean a lot to me if, uh, two years ago it was zero, and if the projection is in five years it to be three times that. So trends are, are very important, and as well, I think I mentioned when we talked originally about the debt management plan, what I would like to see is some early warning tests that prudent municipalities would recognize if we go beyond what would be prudent, and in order to do that, for example, a, a prudent municipality would have a trend liner or whatever, you understand what I'm saying. That's where we can actually make competent decisions based on trends and analytics and early warning tests. Early warning tests being the red flag. If we, uh, uh, trigger a red flag, we need to know about it.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, um, those will be addressed in the annual debt report that comes forward.
Counselor Pierce first?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So, um, just, just so I'm, I'm on board here, um, Robin, you said that we're, we're not going to go through, like, line for line of the things that are in the capital budget here, so if I have questions on some of these, I can just bring them now?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I've got a few, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, through you. So the first one, if you go to page 12, 3. 12, 3, under Bridges. It's got Powerline, Road, Bridge. Can somebody tell me where the bridge is on Powerline Road?
It's very new.
Uh, Mr. Walton, uh, will come to answer that question.
Where?
It's, it's on Powerline East of the Brant Sports Complex. Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, on the far east end, like, almost at the end of the road, like, heading towards the...
By the rugby club?
Yes, exactly. I was going to say by the rugby club because that's where, that's where I know best, but yes, it's on that end.
Yeah, myself, okay.
What's that? Sorry?
Okay, so that's, uh, that's interesting. Okay, so that's fine. I appreciate that. Guess it was too many years since I've been out there. My apologies on that. Um, if we could go to page, uh, where am I at here? Uh, page 12, 5. And I just want to, I, I believe, I believe it is, but under, under fire for the communication systems, that's the, the allotment we are putting through for the radios. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Cindy will come to answer that question.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that account is for the radio system.
Okay.
Um, we've had recent discussions, um, around that. Initially, we thought we may need to build a new tower, and I think the solution that we've come up with actually won't require any additional capital.
Okay, so I, okay, so that is for the radios, that's fine. Thank you. Uh, my apologies, if we could just flip over to the next page, 12, 6. Under IT, Business and Technology, Applications, Software and Hardware, 251,000, like, I'm trying to, I'm in the industry myself, I'm trying to understand what we would, uh, require $250,000 for.
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's a whole host of items in there. Um, there's servers, computers, there's all different software systems. Um, we're moving to, uh, Microsoft Exchange, uh, 365.
Yeah? So that would be licensing and stuff for that. I'm just trying to come up with the, the quarter million dollars. That's, that's kind of... Well, that's what I'm trying to understand.
There's app, app development. So we have, um, initiated a, um, basically it's an IT team for the corporation that meets and determines all the priorities for IT system-wide.
Right.
Um, there's a lot of different softwares that need to be, um, upgraded or replaced. I could get the details.
No, as I say, I'm just curious. I'm in the industry myself, and I'm just trying to put that together, so if, if, if I could, that would be great.
Yes, I can get that.
Thank you. Um, okay, sorry, folks, to keep going here, but if we go to 12, 7. 12, 7, under Parks and Rec. Um, it was, it was, we kind of spoke to it a little bit in regards to the, uh, um, the lighting at Green Lane. Is there any sort of sponsorship opportunities for that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're not aware of any sponsorship opportunities at this time. Um, if we could source some out, that would be great, but not, not that we're aware of at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, sorry, just a couple dozen more. Uh, if we could flip over to 12, 8. Um, the, the, a couple of questions on this page here. For the, in the Public Works Equipment, the Sidewalk Utility Tractor, is that, like, for the snow removal tractors? Perfect. If it is, that's fantastic news. Um, and then a little further down, it's got the Tootle Heights, uh, Class EA for the slope stability. Do we still have to do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there was a commitment in the boundary adjustment that we would share that with the city, so that's our share, and then I think the city's paying probably a, a, a share of that as well.
Okay, and then one kind of general question I have on, on a few of these here, um, in regards to things being done, like reconstruction of Grand River Street North and that, is, is that all going to be part and parcel of EA, or is this separate? For example, on, on 12, 8, uh, there's one there, um, and there's a couple other ones too, on 12, 10 and such.
Through the mayor, um, the costs for Grand River Street North are the anticipation of the start of the design for that, once EA is completed.
Okay, so that is, that is part of that. Okay, perfect. Um, sorry, if I could, um, if you go to 12, 9, for the Recreation Facilities, all the dehumidifiers, are they all from the same, same supplier? For all these, did we get a discount for multiple buys? I'm, I'm curious on that. Like, are they all from the same supplier?
Kathy can come up and answer that.
Kathy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We typically, when we do our procurement process, do bundle those together so that we can get the best deal possible.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry, folks. Uh, so that's part of the EA, so that's fine. We'll go to, uh, 12, 11, if I could. The elevated tank to paint the bowl, a million bucks. The note that I wrote there was, wow, is it really a million dollars to paint that?
Through the mayor, I'll echo the wow, yes.
That's what I wrote, it's like, ooh, okay. A little brush, try a roller.
Through, through the mayor, give a little bit of education here. The, the whole industry and how they do that has changed. Now you have to scaffold and, and enclose them entirely now to do that, and...
Yeah, they did the one at King George Road there in Branford, I saw that.
Yes, it's a very expensive process, and, and getting more expensive. Um, just for council's information, the new tank, which is, we're under contract now, which is being, going to be built at, at the airport, is actually going to be a, a bolted glass line tank so that we can avoid some of those costs in the future.
Oh, excellent, okay. Um, okay, so two more here, if I could, and then I'm good. On that 12, 10, for solid waste, landfill site improvements, um, is that for, is that for, like, Paris with the second scale, or is that for Biggers, or where is that? Because there's another line item there for the, the Biggers expansion. I just want to know if, if that, uh, that hundred thousand, is that for, is that for Paris or Biggers? What's that for?
Yeah, so the Biggers Lane landfill expansion, that'll be for the design of the new, of the new site, and the landfill site improvements, um, I believe that, Mark, do you, um, oh, a hundred thousand, that's for improvements on the, on working on the existing site as, as we are now.
At Biggers?
At Biggers.
Okay, so that's all, that's all Biggers. Okay, so that's not incorporating the, the second scale there in Paris and, and stuff like that? Okay.
No, that project's actually underway right now.
Okay, um, believe it or not, I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gatward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few. Um, Little Creek Bridge, um, where is that? And can somebody tell me, um, are we replacing it or just repairing it? It's over a million dollars.
Goes over Little Creek.
I assume that, too.
Through the mayor, Counselor Gatward. Um, the Little Creek Bridge, it is a major rehab, and my assistant, Mr. Ebby, is looking up exactly where it is. I, I'm not entirely sure.
And, and...
Um, one dot, oh, here it is.
And while, while that's being looked up, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Pierce inquired about the lights at the, um, Green Lane. I thought Green Lane was already lit. Oh, and is it for more than, is, they're lighting all the diamonds now? It's for one more, one more diamond. Okay, thank you.
Your, uh, Mr. Mayor, we're going to chase down the location of the, uh, of the Little Creek Bridge, and we'll report later in the meeting, so.
Are you finished, Joe?
I have just one question about the Brant Mill Bridge, uh, which we closed, um, a few days before the municipal election, and it was on the one-year watch by the engineers that inspect our bridges every year. There's $50,000 in there, and is that to get work done to replace the Brant Mill Bridge or repair it?
Through the mayor to council, that's for, um, funds for possible additional engineering. We're still, um, strategizing a plan to go forward to look at what needs to be done there. Um, we have the engineer's report. We will be in discussions with our, um, our partner, who is the co-owner of the dam part of the bridge, and then, uh, we'll be trying to figure out, uh, by reporting back to council, how we actually go forward on that project.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, the report, um, put it in serious condition, and there was the need to immediately close it.
Yeah, and it's very unfortunate, and I'm hoping we can have it up and running as soon as it's possible.
Counselor Miller?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one item I didn't see in there, and maybe I'm missing it. Um, the Burford Lines had that suggestion about burying some lines, hydro lines downtown. Is there any funding in the capital plan? I didn't see any, or is it, is there an operating for a study? I, what?
Mr. Brad, help me with that. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, the, uh, the, the master plan to do that is, is already budgeted. It's, it's actually going to start as soon as the, uh, the CIP is, is, is approved. It's unlikely we would be getting any work done. That's a complicated project because it's a utilities project and, and a complicated arrangement to try to fund it, so we haven't put anything in the budget pending until the master plan is done, and, and it'll have a, a kind of a, a design course to go forward with, so.
Any further questions for Robin? Counselor Pierce?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, through you, I did find one more. Uh, 12, 8, uh, talks about the water fountain at the, at the Paris Lions Park main washroom. $5,000 for a water fountain?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have, um, either Cindy or Kathy.
That's, that's quite the fountain.
I, I have information about Little Creek's Bridge, if I can interject. It's, it's in Anadaga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the water fountains themselves are around 23, $2400 with the water bottle fillers. That's what we need to put, like, the, all the other ones that we're putting in the new ones, and then you've got some additional plumbing unknown costs at this point, so it might be a little high, but it's probably closer to the $4,000 mark.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ferrier?
Uh, Little Creek Bridge is on, uh, Highway 54, Line 2 in, uh, Anadaga, Lot 87.
Any other questions to Robin? If not, thank you for your report. Do we have to go through all these grants? Huh? Good grief. I suggest we bring the Brant Community Foundation back for an encore. Yikes. Are we going to go through all the grants individually? Is that what we do? Then if we do, then we're going to break for 10 minutes. A 10-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 20, 25 after.